Good evening, we're gonna call this meeting to order, the October 20th Muscatine City Council Meeting, thank you all for coming. Fran, will you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Ray Walt.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Nat Big.
Present.
Sausado. Bynum.
Present.
Harvey.
Present.
Spread.
Present.
Six present and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you Fran. Will you all please join in saying pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone for coming tonight. We have a rather long agenda tonight, but before we get started, is there anyone here who would like to speak to us about something that's not already on tonight's agenda? Hearing nothing, we'll move right along to the consent agenda number five. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda which includes items six A through B, items eight A through B, item eleven, items twelve A through F, and tonight's bills totaling four million, four hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-six cents?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you Phil, is there a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Bob? All in favor say aye.
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 Closed? Motion carries with all ayes. Moving on down to item seven on the agenda. The first item A, this is a public hearing, and this public hearing concerns the proposed urban renewal plan amendment for the consolidated Muscatine urban renewal area. The amendment includes seven projects that would allow for the use of tax increment financing funds to pay for them. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Move to close the public hearing?
Do I have a second?
Second, Your Honor.
All in favor say aye.
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 Closed? Motion carries with all ayes. Seven B, this public hearing concerns a proposed development agreement with Harrison Lofts authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement. The proposed development agreement with Harrison Lofts is for their construction of an apartment complex which will provide low and moderate income housing. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second?
Present.
All in favor say aye.
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 Closed? Motion carries with all ayes. Seven C, this public hearing concerns a proposed development agreement with KRE authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement. The proposed development agreement with KRE is for the redevelopment of a commercial facility. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Move to close.
Second, Phil?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Closed? The motion carries with all ayes. The next public hearing concerns the proposed lease of certain premises located at the municipal airport for fixed base operations. The proposed lease has been reviewed and approved by the current LSE Carver Arrow and by the Airport Advisory Commission. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Move to close. Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Closed? Motion carries with all ayes. Seven E, presented for city council's consideration is a proposed vacation of utility easements in the Riverbend Second Edition. The property owner has submitted an easement vacation plat for a ten-foot wide utility easement composed of two adjoining five-foot utility easements located on lots sixteen and seventeen at this location. The property owner plans to combine the two lots. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second?
Second, Your Honor.
All in favor say aye.
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 Closed? Motion carries with all ayes. Moving on to eleven A on the agenda is a resolution approving the urban renewal plan amendment for the consolidated Muscatine urban renewal area. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Hearing none, Councilman Ray Walt, how do you vote?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Nat Big?
Aye.
Spread?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. Eleven B, we have a resolution approving development agreement with Harrison Lofts authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Spread, how do you vote?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Nat Big?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Ray Walt?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Eleven C, we have a resolution approving development agreement with KRE authorizing annual appropriation tax increment pledging payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Second, Your Honor.
Phil? Any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Bynum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Spread?
Aye.
Nat Big?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Ray Walt?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Moving on to eleven D, presented for city council's consideration is a request to accept property donated by Carver Riverfront Real Estate Incorporated. In consideration for gifting this property to the city, Carver is requesting the fixed base operator lease and airport managers' agreements between the City of Muscatine and Carver Arrow be amended to allow for term extensions through June 30th of 2040. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Closed? The request is approved with all ayes. Moving on to eleven E, we have a resolution approving the lease of certain premises located at the Muscatine Airport for fixed base operations. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you Phil. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Your Honor. Considering this is a fifteen-year lease, I looked through it and I may have just missed it, but are there provisions for reviewing the terms and the dollar fees during those fifteen years?
Under section four, there's a three percent increase, annual increase, and it also allows for the lesser and the less CD enter into negotiations for additional changes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that?
That's annually, excuse me.
Yes.
Sorry.
It's okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Spread, how do you vote?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Nat Big?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Ray Walt?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Eleven F, presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the airport managers' agreement. The agreement provides for hours of operation, maintenance of the building and grounds, mowing, snow removal, insurance coverage, and related management responsibilities as outlined. The proposed agreement has been reviewed and approved by Carver Arrow, the current manager, and the Airport Advisory Commission. The agreement will begin with the execution of this agreement and end June 30th of 2030. With the provision, it will automatically be extended for two additional five-year periods provided it is determined to be mutually beneficial to the city and Carver Arrow. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Closed? The request is approved with all ayes. Moving on to eleven G, we have a resolution approving vacation of utility easements in the Riverbend Second Edition which is 3220 Clermont Drive. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Bynum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Spread?
Aye.
Nat Big?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Ray Walt?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. Eleven H, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the final plat of the Schultz Acres subdivision. A request has been filed for a combined preliminary final plat for a one-lot subdivision in unincorporated Muscatine County at 2620 Stewart Road. The proposed subdivision falls within the two-mile limit which requires the city's review and approval. The proposed subdivision would create a new three-to-four acre lots for the purpose of constructing a new home site. Is there a motion to approve the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Any discussion?
That one thing, Your Honor, on that plat, it kinda makes a zigzag around some existing buildings, is that gonna land lock that property? Because everything around it is under different ownership.
No, no, both, I believe both parcels have frontage along Stewart, so it'll be all right.
That one right there?
You have a double red line.
The red line there, that's the entire parcel, this is dividing, that's the line. Okay, this is the line. This is, this is the entire parcel, this is the line, so you have access here.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Ray Walt, how do you vote?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Nat Big?
Aye.
Spread?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Thank you, the resolution is adopted with all ayes. Eleven I, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution authorizing the assessment of unpaid abatement costs and unpaid rental inspection fees to private properties. Periodically, the city takes action to assess unpaid nuisance abatement costs and rental inspection fees to private properties. The fee being requested for assessment at this time totals fourteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-six cents. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Please, are people just not paying the inspection fees, is that it, or?
Periodically, like once a month now, we've caught up on this months ago, but what it is, is that there's not just mowing, but there's, we'll get into snow removal, we'll see junk cars, we'll have rental inspection fees on here, there's a plethora of different menu items and things that are nuisance abatements. And they're given notices, they're knocked on doors, there's signs on doors that we'll have to put on there. But eventually, people pay because it's put on the tax rolls. You can't do much unless that's paid. So this is our, this is our big leverage, our big hammer, and that, for example, the day before, yesterday, before, we had already submitted this earlier this week, but we have picked up like a thousand dollars worth of people paying their bills before this went on this list, the final list. So it does work. And over the course of the month or so, as people need to pay taxes, we get our, we get the money.
Do we charge interest?
You asked that before.
Did I?
And I'd forgotten what the answer was. I do believe that we're allowed to, and if we're not, I'll have to look that up, but I don't recall if we are charging interest. I think we are allowed to, but I don't, huh? That's a good question, I'd forgotten what the answer was, but I'm pretty sure I gave you one and I completely forgot what it was.
Let us know, sir.
Do.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Bynum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Spread?
Aye.
Nat Big?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Ray Walt?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Eleven J, presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the submission of the fiscal year 1516 Annual Financial Report to the State of Iowa. This report includes all budgeted funds of the city and was prepared on a budget basis. Revenues and other financing sources totaled sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars and one hu- sixty-seven million, one hundred and fifty, there was no decimal, sixty-seven million, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars for the year, and expenditures and other uses totaled sixty-three million, seven hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and five dollars. Actual city expenditures in each functional area were within the budgeted amounts as required by the state with the exception of debt service expenditures. Debt service costs exceeded the budgeted amount by sixteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars due to bond issuance costs for refunding the last years of the 2008 issue. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second. Let's take one out.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Closed? The request is approved with all ayes. Eleven K, presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the application form as proposed by the nominating committee for appointments to the city's various boards and commissions. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Closed? Request is approved with all ayes. Eleven L, presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve a grant agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for the T-hanger Design and Apron Expansion Project at the municipal airport. The city was notified that the IDOT has approved the application for this project. The grant agreement will allow the city to design all phases of the project and construct the first phase of the T-hanger apron with a total state funding allocation of two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars. The local match totals thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars for a total project cost of two-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Closed? Request is approved with all ayes. Eleven M, presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve contract modification number four for the Community Development Block, Block Grant Facade Renovation Project. This contract modification involves stucco repair at 107 Iowa Avenue in the amount of six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. Grant funds will be used to complete this additional work. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Closed? Request is approved with all ayes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Before you go any further, item eleven N is okay, it was, we don't, we don't need to change, the change that I had marked off in there.
Do not make that change.
Do not make those changes.
I will do that. Eleven N, presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve a quiet zone funding agreement. On July 14th, 2016, the city council approved a funding agreement with the Stanley Howe Revocable Trust to pay for a quiet zone study by a qualified consultant. Ahead of the study's completion, the Howe Foundation has agreed to pay for any safety equipment and its installation if the study supports the need for a quiet zone. This new funding agreement is in addition to the funding of the study already underway. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Any discussion?
Just want to recognize the Howe family for stepping up to do this, it's very generous and they don't have to do it.
Very generous.
And my accolades to the Howe family, as always.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Closed? The request is approved with all ayes. Eleven O, presented for city council's consideration is a request from the Police Department to declare squad light bars as surplus property. The department has three light bars that are no longer needed. If the light bars are declared surplus property, it is the department's intention to sell two of the light bars. The department has three light bars that are no longer needed. If the light bars are declared as surplus property, it is the department's intention to sell two of the light bars to another government agency with the third to be purchased by the Letts Volunteer Fire Department. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed? The request is approved with all ayes. Eleven P, presented for city council's consideration is a request to change the alley located next to 1420 Park Avenue from a one-way to a two-way alley. Currently, the building is vacant and the property owner does not intend to remove snow from the parking lot this winter. The owner of the property would like to allow vehicles to exit to the north to prevent them from having to access the parking lot to exit onto Park Avenue. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion?
I have a question, are we going to plow from one street to the other, past their Can you rephrase that for me? Are we gonna be going from Clay, we're gonna push snow from Clay to whatever the other street is, peril, running parallel to Park Avenue from? In the alley? Street to street, in the alley all the way, in front of their building then?
Not on private property?
No.
This is on the backside of the building?
This is, yeah.
In the alley behind the building, so that, so that the parking lot will not be used.
But when I looked at the plat, it's that little.
What we would do is we would push the snow from Clay Street to the dead end of the alley and leave it there probably, and not go through, because there's no access out from the alley to Park Avenue without going through the parking lot.
So our alley doesn't cross their private property? There isn't any, we don't have an alley easement in essence through there?
I don't believe we do, no. It butts into their parking lot and that's just where it ends, so in the past, people have come through that way and just gone out through the parking lot to Park Avenue.
Okay. I just assumed that since they weren't plowing.
The way it's signed now, that you can't go out to the north, you have to go through the parking lot and go out, so we would just propose to change that so they can exit out that way to the north.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
We already have.
Oh yeah, all in favor say aye.
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 Closed? Request is approved. Eleven Q, presented for city council's consideration is a request to eliminate parking on the north and south sides of Sunset Drive near the intersection of Sunrise Circle. The traffic committee has determined that in order to provide for suitable sightlines and driver safety, parking should not be allowed on the north and south sides of Sunset Drive from the intersection with Sunrise Circle to a point approximately one-hundred-and-ninety-five feet west. Affected residents have been notified of this proposed change. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
This is one.
Second.
One second. Now is the time for discussion. Would you like to have something to say? Please come to the podium and say your name and address.
My name is Lori Costas and I live at 500 Sunset Drive, which is the area in question. This issue was brought up to me over the summer, a neighbor apparently had some issues with us parking there. We have only lived in the house for a year and this year is kind of out of the norm for us as far as traffic goes. I do have five children of my own, so we do have, you know, get-togethers and whatnot, but we have been working on our house, so we've had car trailers and jump trucks and landscaping equipment and all kinds of things, in and out, and it has taken up some parking, I do understand that. But it's not a typical thing, we don't normally park in front of the house, we usually don't park in the street, you know, as a rule, unless, you know, we have a get-together. This was brought up to us, apparently there was a neighbor across the street that was concerned about it. He was used to a ninety-year-old woman living there that didn't have cars and traffic and things like that. I have five children, you know, and if it was a safety issue, I wouldn't be here today. I clearly don't see where there's any issue for a safety concern, I mean, I can fit three cars safely through that corner at the same time. Now, they're saying that there's some visibility issues through that corner, the corner's not even that sharp of a corner to even have that type of concern, it's very short, you know, and, and you can see visible, visibly through the corner from either side of the street, no matter which way you're coming, either going, you know, through, from the Mulberry side or coming off of Bidwell there. So I'm not really sure where this is all coming from, like I said, we have had, you know, more traffic than normal in and out of that area this year, but it's, like I said, we're working on the house, we've only lived there for a year, this is the first summer we've actually been able to work on it, so I just, I really wish that, you know, that the council would reconsider this.
Which of these houses is yours?
500.
Can I approach you?
Sure.
I thought that's, oh, okay.
Yeah.
I was thinking that was the lot number.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, when we first moved there, you know, obviously we have a neighbor that's clearly set in his ways, he didn't like the fact that I was painting my house, I mean, he approached me when I was painting my house and asked if he had a say in it since he has to look at it. He doesn't like to drive, you know, pull out of his driveway and have to look behind him, he's not used to that. So for him, it's an inconvenience, and he's, I feel like he's really pushed that issue and now it's, you know, it was, there were signs posted temporarily and then they were taken down, and now it's been pushed to the traffic department as a safety issue. I plead my case, I really wish that the city would really reconsider that and look at it again if possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, please. Please say your name and address.
I'm Kathy Metcalf and I live at five oh seven Sunrise Circle, which is the first house just after you turn off Sunset in the affected area. The neighbor you're speaking of was, is out of town tonight. Dave Wozniewski, or he would have been here. I see it as a safety issue because of the, when there's on-street parking there, it becomes essentially one lane. I think it is right that you could get three cars through that area except that you can't see. So I know that I've pulled over in order to let cars through and I've seen people pull over the other way coming towards Mulberry onset, on Sunset to let people through. There are times of the day, because Grant School is just down the area from us, that you have a lot of extra traffic. Drop off in the morning, pick up in the afternoon. So I think it's a safety issue for the traffic and also for pedestrians, some of whom are kids because it's an elementary school down there. So I've lived in my house since nineteen eighty-five and it's only been an issue in the last year. And I assume it would be inconvenient, but I just don't think it's, it's a safety issue as far as I'm concerned. So I know a number of the neighbors have talked about it. Unfortunately, I'm the only one here that, I think that has been involved in the discussions about getting the no parking area, so.
And you're at five oh four?
I'm at five oh seven. So as you come
Five oh seven.
Five oh seven. So I'm the first house after you turn left.
On the other corner.
Well, I'm, as you go down Sunset off Mulberry and you turn left, I'm that first house. So I come that way a lot, but, you know, it's
Behind Dave?
I live behind Dave, yeah.
Good.
And I know Jeff Schmidt sent some communications regarding it and he lives just across the street the other way. So I think maybe we see it more because we're not packing, backing in on your driveway. I know Dave Wozniewski does have an issue seeing when he comes out of his driveway because he's talked to me about that, but he's not here to speak to that issue. So I think it's a safety issue, so.
Do we need no parking on both sides or could we just do it on one side?
Well, I think primarily they do park on just one side, but it narrows this. You can't see past the cars is the problem when you're coming off. I think they park on their side of the street where their house is. But when you're coming off Mulberry onto Sunset, you can't see around that curve. So, you know, those of us who go that way a lot when the cars are there, and they haven't been recently, I have to say. They haven't been there the last, I don't know, couple of weeks for sure. But when they are there, you can't see. So those of us who go there a lot have learned to be very careful, but somebody just coming through. And we do have some teenage drivers in the, in the neighborhood. Not that they, you know, won't get better as they get older, but, and then, of course, the kids that are, are on the sidewalks. That's a kind of a place where they, they cross over because if you come up from Grant School, you can avoid crossing the street if you stay on, on the Sunset side, on their side, and then cross up close to my house. So I don't know. I have a preschool grandson. I walk him home. And so I know he's okay, but I'm concerned about the others, so that's really all I have.
Please say your name and address.
Hello, my name's Megan Keeler. I live at fifteen twelve Bidwell Road. My son and daughter also attend Grant School and I'm a friend of Lori, the first person that came up. We were doing kind of a little case study of our own. I'd called and spoken to Randy Howell to find out what the concern was. You know, why was this an issue? I've been to that house a million times, seen the parking situation. That's the side of the school that I picked my own children up at. So I'm there five days a week, twice a week, or twice a day. I did take some pictures just so that you guys would have a visual because maybe everyone's not familiar with that area. And I can pass my phone along, but the first one I wanted to show you is cars three wide right there in the area that this is talking about, in the parking in front of her home, with ample space between them. Now, as even another person in the neighborhood mentioned, there's only ever cars parked on one side of the road. The gentleman that had complained, his side of the road, he's across the street. No one ever parks over there. And, you know, that's probably a good thing. If you do make no parking, it would, you know, you're guaranteed to always have two-way traffic flow that way. To say both sides of the street, it's not a safety issue. We, I even took video of another one of our friends backing out of the gentleman in question's driveway. He has a double-wide driveway that perfectly angles to go with the curve. Which, by the way, there's full visibility coming, like if you're going from Mulberry down, you can see the entire way whether there's cars there or not. It's actually, you've even got a little bit of a decline so you can see over the top of cars that are there. The only possible thing in question could maybe be coming the other direction, maybe heading towards Mulberry if it was fully lined with cars. You're not talking one or two cars at that point. We, we went to a couple of different neighbors on Lori's side of the street last night and we're talking to them because Randy had said that a few near misses had been reported, which I just, you know, I found it hard to believe. It doesn't sit right knowing the street. It's almost as wide as Mulberry for crying out loud, you know? Doesn't make sense. So one of the gentlemen that I spoke to, as soon as I walked over, he was blowing his leaves and I'm like, I just wanted to ask you a question. They're talking about putting no parking signs in. He immediately goes, and I'm on board. And I go, okay, I understand that, you know? I just, I'm wondering what the concern is, where the safety concern is. And he said, well, they want to remove that speed bump. And I was like, well, I did hear that actually. Randy had mentioned that and I said, but that's not the issue. Speed bumps in a school zone are common sense. And he goes, well, I don't have any issue with the on-street parking. I just don't want anyone removing the speed bump. So I don't know if there's been some confusion there with some of the safety issues that have been brought up to the neighbors. I do know that my friend pays five thousand dollars a year in taxes and there is no HOA. As far as cars being parked on the street, if it's not a safety hazard, I just don't understand how the city would be so moved to be involved in what to me presents itself as a neighbor dispute. As a gentleman that has lived there a long time and is maybe not happy with people that are coming in and changing the neighborhood, and we all know someone like that. That's not even that surprising or hard to believe. But after the comments about, well, don't I have a say in what color you paint your house? I mean, I think that you can see there's more here than, than a safety issue, especially if you've ever been on that street. And I really, I suggest anyone go drive over there after this and take a look. There's no safety issue there. That's all I've got.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there any way of knowing how many people from the area attended the traffic committee meeting?
We've had several different neighbors come to multiple traffic committee meetings. We, the first group that came through was after that meeting, we put the temporary no parking signs up just to see how it would go. We got the response that we expected. So those were removed. I, I don't disagree with anything anybody said. It seems to me that there, there is a safety issue there. There also is a neighborhood dispute there, which is why we brought to council. We cannot put no parking up there without council approval. So we had to come to this point anyway. So which is why the letters went out to all the residents affected so that they could come and share their piece with you as well. What we're dealing with is a poorly designed intersection and it's something that I've inherited recently and I'm working on. We have some ideas, but at this point, the traffic committee decided with traffic counts and speed through there that it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to limit parking on both sides of the street just for clear sightlines. The issue if you do that is that you, you reduce the site blockages. So now people tend, might tend to go faster. So there's a trade-off there. There is no good solution, in my opinion, as far as the traffic committee goes. We came up with this one to try to set a solution out before council. It's your, it's your decision to make, which is why you're all here. But that's, that's kind of where we, where we are. There's, I don't have a good answer for you unfortunately. It's, it's a sticky situation between the neighbors, between the street, the way the street is just laid out on that curve that just doesn't lend itself very well to, to travel. So in the, in the opinion of the traffic committee, if you remove the cars back to the back edge of the corner, which I think is on the drawing that you have, that clears the sightlines around the curve. And that's what we came up with today.
So could we, could we eliminate or post it, no parking on the side? And I'll say Dave's side of the street. Leave that as no parking, leave parking on the other side. I, I personally believe that if you got some cars parking on the street occasionally, it slows traffic down.
Yeah, that's
And, and I think the intention, that speed hump is, is like a, just a boil in the road.
It, it's worthless.
It's not much.
It needs to be, it needs to be removed.
We would like to definitely review that and do something different there. If, I think if you, if you had no parking on the north side and left parking on the south side, you're going to have what you have today. Because it sounds like for me, nobody parks on the north side anyway. People park on the south side. Honestly, to me, I'm okay with parking on the south side. We just want to try to find a solution for the neighborhood. This is what we came up with based on the input that we got from the neighbors. So more of them wanted no parking than wanted parking. You can come back up if you want. I'm just, so are there any other questions?
Brian, which is north up on the sheet?
North is, five oh one.
North is north over here this side in the south.
Yeah.
As best as we can do.
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't have north on there. Are there any other questions while I may, I can stand over to the side and just, you can come back to.
So it sounds like your, the recommendation from the traffic committee was more just a way to keep peace or to
Yeah.
Not so much
It has merit in the safety thing. I think if we can get, if we can remove the cars, we reduce the site hazard. That solves the safety issue. However, it has the potential to create another safety issue by increasing the speed. So that's where we are.
You'd be fine leaving it alone?
Yes.
Mrs. Costas?
And you, and I'll guarantee, if you, you probably haven't seen all of the problem intersections in the community since you've been here.
Yeah.
You've inherited quite a few.
Yes, I have.
Trust me.
I just wanted to add too that, you know, occasionally when my kids come or, you know, you know, family comes over and even Dave's had family get togethers who's parked along the whole side of that street, including my side. So with that being said, I try to encourage people not to park on the edge there where my mailbox is because I get that. You can't see past if somebody's parked there. But they shouldn't be parking there anyway because there's a mailbox and then the postal service can't get in and out of there. So when we park there, there is a tree in the middle of that approachment there. I mean, I'm sorry, the boulevard, that's where we park. If we ever park there, it's in the middle of that area there. We always leave a spot for the postal person to pull in and out safely. And along, on the other side, there's also a mailbox on the other side of that that's owned, that's owned by the neighbors that we, you know, make sure that they can get in and out. So there's at least a car length on each side that we try to keep open so that doesn't happen. Because he's right, if you had a car on that corner there, you can't see. But I'm pretty good about telling people, move your car, you can't be parked there or, or, you know, whatever. So just, I just wanted to add that too. So he wasn't entirely wrong, so.
Thank you.
That's, that's good that he's not entirely wrong.
Who's your question for? A comment, go ahead.
I just had a cop, well, I don't think, you might want to come back up. Anyway, I, I got an email and a phone call from one of the other neighbors, not Dave. It was one of the other one. And I believe Kathy referenced them, that, that they think it's a safety hazard also. And I, I referred him to the safety, or to the traffic committee. And I guess the word that I was getting back was that was your recommendation, even before it came to council.
Yeah, as, as it stands, our recommendation is still no parking on both sides just because we, we feel that the sightlines are better that way. That's just the recommendation. I mean, council can act on what they've heard here tonight, but that's, we, we think that would help. Yes.
I'm sorry, didn't you say just a little bit before, just leave it the way it is?
I said I would be okay with that.
Oh.
If that's what you decide to do.
And so the staff recommendation is?
No parking.
No parking.
No parking both sides of the street.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna clarify that though. That, that's the traffic committee's recommendation, which is made up of city employees and other
So that's not just staff recommendations?
It's school district, there's school district people on there, there's power water.
Employees. The, the, Brian and I had spoken to the property owner earlier on when the temporary signs were up and it seems to me that the biggest issue was when large vehicles or large trailers or, or larger equipment was, was placed on the road and not necessarily when, when vehicles were there. I mean, that, that issue's come up tonight with the vehicles. But I'm, I'm wondering if we get a little creative and limit the size of the vehicle rather than, rather than just eliminating parking altogether.
We are studying the intersection as well for different alignments, different possibilities. We're not ready to present anything like that at this time. This is the simplest thing that we've come up with right now.
So how do you, how do you put a sign up that says no trucks over eight thousand pounds or between here and here?
We haven't done that to my knowledge before and I'd, I'd want to come back and take a look at it, but it'd be, it'd be an alternate solution. My issue is, you know, it's been working in this fashion for a number of years and to come in now and to do this rather than trying to come up with a long-term permanent solution down the road or maybe try something in, in the interim, but.
I would like to see us try putting no parking on one side of the street and leave the other one alone. I, I don't want to. My, my, my vehicle I use, if I'm dragging the trailer, which would be an obvious problem, is over eight thousand pounds if you want to pick a number. I don't want to, I, I think that, I, it's an idea. I don't think it's real, real good idea. Because then you're, how are you going to tell, cops are going to come over and are they going to have to run, run some portable scales, have the guy, I mean, that's a
I'm, I'm thinking height, not, not necessarily width, but if nobody's parking on the one side.
I guess at this point, I'd like to have, modify this to say that we're going to have another, continue the trial with no parking on one side and that would be the five oh one west, north, whatever, Dave's side.
I just need you guys to tell us how to do it so we can sign it. But we do need council approval to put in no parking act, so.
I have a, I have a question for Brian. Based on this, the only safety issue I see is people coming up on Sunrise, eating here and if there's vehicles parked here, not being able to see traffic coming. I don't see any need for no parking here because I don't know who they block. It's that maybe somebody backing out.
The way that traffic seems to go through that intersection, if there's a vehicle parked there, they're over towards the center lane or, or farther over since there's no stripe on that lane, that becomes the issue that we're, that we've been made aware of.
My, my son used to live over, down on Sunset. I used to travel this all the time. I was just over in this neighborhood today. I, I really don't see it as a big issue. I would, I've, if, if we're going to do a, continue with a trial for a period of time, I would just put it on one side. Otherwise, I would, I would not be in favor of this at this point.
I would think no parking here would be, satisfy any visibility at this intersection. I don't know why you'd have to no parking here. Or no park, leave it the way it is here and leave it the way it is here and just post this as no parking. So that a car coming this way, it has a, assuming they stop at the intersection, can look down and be able to see if there's oncoming traffic. Or I guess I would object to having no, no parking. That's double negative there. Just leave it the way it is.
Joel, did you want to speak?
I'm Joel Krausar. My address is thirty-four thirteen Baton Rouge Road. I'm not in capacity at the podium here as a member of the Voice of Musketeer with the media, but for seven years, I lived at seven oh seven Center Drive. And up until five months ago, I was a resident of this neighborhood and would often egress from the neighborhood through Mulberry from my address on Center Drive. I would go loop around and come by this intersection because it was easier with school traffic that was heading down towards Grant School. And I think as Councilman Harvey was just explaining, that intersection really, that, to me, that was the only issue I ever had any issues was if somebody was parked in front of Mr. Wozniewski's house or down towards that intersection. You couldn't see cars coming from Mulberry down towards. But that was very rare that there was ever anybody parked in that spot. I know that the property, that the neighbor is being discussed about and I, and living in that neighborhood for seven years, never had any issues with cars that were parked there. Even when they were parked on the, on the side of the road, you could see clear all the way down. And I think if there is any no parking, it would be on the north side of the street in front of Mr. Wozniewski's house because of that issue when you're at the, the yield sign there, trying to turn right off of Sunrise to go up towards Mulberry. But other than that, lived in that neighborhood for seven years, played in that neighborhood for thirty years, never had any issues with sightlines coming down from Mulberry down towards Robin Road. So that's a, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Joel.
I hate to second guess the traffic committee, but I'm going to.
So my motion was to change, change
So you're making a motion to?
Amendment.
An amendment?
To do temporary on Dave's side, what, north side of the street and try that for a, a month, whatever time period you think. How long has this been?
It, it's, it was taken down. The temporary?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was taken down quite a while ago. If you would like to just do temporary for a time period, I don't need council action. If you would like to just do temporary for a time period, I don't need council action. We can just, we can do something on a temporary basis, report back to council and then...
So just table this for now?
Table it and then we'll bring it back following a three-month period?
Okay, I'll move the table then. I'll withdraw my other motion.
Did you second it, Tom? Tom, did you second?
Yes, he did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Request is approved with all ayes.
So it's been tabled?
It's been tabled. Okay, the next item is 11-R for information only. We were going to have an update on summarizing the status of the activities associated with the administrative consent order and other landfill projects that are in progress right now. Tim Bulow from Barker Lamar will be giving us an update in January. Moving on to number 12 on the agenda, communications. From council members. Councilman Spread, do you have anything tonight?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Councilman Harvey?
Yes, Your Honor, it's several... It's about a month and a half away, but I want to remind the citizens that the Canadian Pacific Christmas train, or whatever they call it, is going to come through Muscatine on December 2nd at 7:30. And if you go on their website, and those of you who haven't seen the train before, it's, it looks quite awesome. So I just encourage you to mark that down in your calendar, December 2nd at 7:30 PM. At that time of day, it should be really lit up. And I think Muscatine's awful lucky that for the last many years, they've come through Muscatine and stopped rather than just keep going. So I think it's a credit to our community that they're willing to do that.
Thank you.
That's all.
Councilman Bynum?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Nat Big?
Nothing, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilman Fitzgerald?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Councilman Raywell?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Steph?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
I just had a couple of things. I wanted to share that I have recently joined other mayors across Iowa in supporting Iowa's water and land legacy called I-Will. This is a coalition that was formed bringing Iowans together in support of immediate, permanent, reliable, substantial funding aimed at improving our water quality, protecting our soil, enhancing our wildlife, our wildlife habitat, and increasing outdoor recreation. It's a great project and I would encourage all Iowans to join me along with Sarah Landy and Senator Chris Brace in supporting I-Will. It's a wonderful project. Second, I would like to remind people that October 29th, we will be having the next Coffee with the Mayor at Riverside Cafe at 9:00 AM. And next, let's get to my next page. We are moving into closed session. I need, I have a request to enter closed session.
Mayor, I've got...
Per Iowa Code Section 21.5.1.1C to discuss strategy with council and matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in that litigation. And per Iowa Code Section 622.10 to discuss attorney-client privilege and attorney-work product matters with legal counsel. Councilman Nat Big?
Yes, I have a separate motion in advance of that and I have a statement in advance of that motion. The City Council finds that the, excuse me, the mayor's presence at this meeting creates a conflict of interest and as the mayor is a potential adverse party to pending threatened litigation and her presence could waive the city's attorney-client privilege. As a result of this conflict, I move that the mayor be excluded from this closed session pursuant to the provisions of Iowa Code Section 21.5.3A.
I'll second those motions.
Any discussion? Do we need a roll call on that?
Yes.
Councilman Spread?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Bynum?
Nay.
Nat Big?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Raywell?
Aye.
Very good. We're going to take a brief recess to move into closed session. Thank you very much.